Now, I call this meeting as the planning board's ordinance. First item on the agenda is public input. If you have anything to say that's not on the agenda, you can come forward and state your name and where you live. And if you don't now, you have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Next thing, I'd like to recognize Eric Rupa, our planning director.
Thank you, George. Good evening, everybody. Just before we jump into the regular agenda, I just wanted to quickly introduce a new member who was appointed last night that's not sitting up there with you tonight. Leslie Clavus was appointed to fill the last vacancy just last night. And Leslie has been away. I've been busy. We did not have time to coordinate a meeting to get her ready. I'm familiar with the agenda for tonight, but I just wanted to acknowledge Leslie and look forward to having her serve with us here soon. So she should be on the board next time. And also, for those of you moving on to take your paper nameplates, we will be wearing nameplates. I was just waiting for the last vacancies, so I'll have to do one more.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Welcome to the planning board. We'll see you next meeting, for sure. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, corrections, additions, and deletions. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a Heart of Fletcher overlay design for proposed car wash at 74 Bagwell Mill Road. Once again, I'd like to recognize Eric Rupa.
All right. Thank you again, George. Now, I'm trying to speak up and ask everybody to speak up because we are logistically challenged tonight because we don't have application up here in this room. And also apologize that we don't have electronic visuals handy. I know they're in the middle of upgrading the system. I don't know how long that's going to take, but at some point, if we have future meetings up here, we'll hopefully have a little bit better setup. So with that being said, if anybody has trouble hearing, please let us know. This first agenda tonight is for a, as you mentioned, a Heart of Fletcher overlay design review for proposed car wash. The intersection of Bagwell Mill Road at 25 is almost all the way up to the county line just across the street from the Mission Pardee, adjacent to that kind of Red Roof retail office complex that you may be familiar with. The use is conforming. We allow vehicle services, minor maintenance and repairs and whatnot, which car washes are generally allowed. So it is a permitted use. We have talked with the design team who are with us tonight that I'll introduce in just a moment. As with any property in our Heart of Fletcher overlay, this board is tasked with the design review. I will say, and George and I have spoken about this as I have with a few other members over the years, there's really been kind of a question as to potentially where that entryway to the Heart of Fletcher overlay. This is on the outermost fringe of the overlay district in a sub precinct called the Town Center Gateway. So if you're going up north on 25 past the Cavalry Episcopal, it would be one property to the north of that. That being said, they have gone to great lengths to design a structure that architecturally is more interesting and unique architecturally than most car washes you'll see. And the landscaping plan is done in compliance with their ordinance parking. They will have to communicate with DOT about driveway access permits on and off of 25. They have that in motion, I believe. The one issue tonight that's subject to discussion largely would be the building width. And there's a very tricky section of the guidelines in our appendix two for this situation. The word encouraged is used, which is a very sticky word. It is not shallow. It is encouraged. The building is encouraged to above the setback line for 50% of the lot width, which this, the unique nature of a car wash structure, it's not typically, the single drive-through car washes are not going to be that wide of the building. So just from a fast perspective, with the pains that they've taken architecturally to meet our standards with the brick, pitched roofs, et cetera, the openings, windows that face Bagwell Mill Road, this is, I feel like a compliant site plan for sure. And it's a subjective matter on whether the building should be wider. I mean, frankly, the particular owner of this establishment probably would not be able to go for it if it had to change architecturally because it is what it is. So I'll leave it at that and be happy to answer any questions as they come up. I do want to introduce Zach Cooper with Cooper Construction and Shari Moss, who was the architect involved in the design of the building. And Nick A., I can't pronounce his last name. I apologize, but Nick A., he told me it was hard to use that, so Nick A.'s the property owner. And I'll introduce, I believe, Zach. He wants to come to the panel.
Duane's actually going to stay.
Okay, Duane's here. Duane enters the engineer.
All right. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. Good evening. I think Eric did a great job of explaining it. I guess one other thing I would point out is we are right under 40% or 50% frontage there on Bagwell Mill. And due to grading, I don't know, we did do a grading plan, but on the landscape plan, you can see some grades on there. Those are two-foot contours, so as you can see, there's a fair amount of fall across the site. So there will be a retaining wall incorporated into the building and then down the side. So if you're looking at it from Bagwell Mill, it will be Building S, maybe well, and that would be a decorative retaining wall. So not only will you get sidewalk across all frontages, but you'll get landscaping in the back, landscaping along the front. So and as Eric said, this is a very attractive building. There's overhead electric across down Bagwell Mill and across US 25, so that also encourages where this building is placed and how it's placed. So if you guys have any questions for me.
Is this car wash a single bay or multiple bays? You drive through and it's like Eagle Pass. It's not single bays that are open and it is open all night? It's going to be a...
No, it's like a...
Like a, so there will be a gate to keep people from loitering or coming to that?
We could put a barrier up there.
Barrier, yeah, okay.
Do you think that the kiosk where you come in and pay, does it have a gate on it?
So that's quite a bit of a drop-off on the side that the car wash is on to Bagwell Mill. There's no way that you could have an entrance without it. There's not really...
Correct, right. Really, the grade kind of is dictating where we have our access and how we enter and exit the site. There's 18 feet of fall from US Highway 25 to the backwater back here, so I mean, really, to put something, to put a drive on Bagwell Mill would be challenging.
Yeah, I remember years ago when they backfilled that lot, it was really low. It was almost as low as that lowest point. It was backfilled, and I thought, what will become of this? And it stayed like it so long. Does the planning board, y'all have any questions?
I was out to the site this afternoon, and I noticed that Hendersonville Road, it's way up, and then it really drops off, and there's two old houses back there. Where does this property line come? Does it take the first house out?
It takes the first house, yes.
And that's the property line? Where there's a tree line between the two houses?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I could interject one thing as well. Because all of the property, even the house behind where this would be, is a residential use. It happens to be zone commercial. There is a minimal evergreen kind of vegetative buffer, transition yard, as they call it. So on their plan, they do show some additional landscaping at the rear to buffer between the commercial and that existing residential use.
I have two questions, just generally since I haven't really been paying attention to car washes in Fletcher before my life on the planning board. So in Fletcher, I mean, where are other car washes? I mean, is this the...
There was an operating one on Old Airport Road in the industrial district or the transition of the industrial district that's shut down now. That's more of the old style of you pull into a bay and spray your own car kind of situation. And I don't think there is another active one.
Yeah, there is a line in the sky.
Behind, yes, excuse me, yes, one of those other bay bays.
And what about the other brick one? Is that an active one? That there's a vacant brick one of three bay? There's another one that's just like right past Costers. There's a brick one of three bay on the same side?
Oh, on the Mr. Pete's property, yes. That's exactly.
Is that active? But it's still there?
It's still there, yeah.
And the other question is, so how does this one work in the sense that there's a reception? Is this an autonomous-like thing where people come in and pay and go, stay in the car and go through? Or is there people, you know, driving cars and all that kind of stuff? I mean, how's it operated?
Yeah, the functionality might be a little out of my realm here. Yeah.
Well, it consists of, you'll pull up, and you'll have the menu board, the kiosk. You'll pick a car wash, purchase what you want. You'll pull around, and we'll have people load you up on a conveyor.
So you stay in your car?
And you stay in that area?
Yes.
And you pull up, and that's the vacuum areas where people finish back in your cars.
Is that like a SIPs?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? Any other discussions? Anything you want to say? Personally, I don't see a problem. I know there was some concern about location on the property, but for this thing to function like they need it to, it's the only possible position for that building. It is close to the property line, and it's, the way the lot is shaped, the road frontage is, I'm sure y'all are proposing the frontage be on Bagwell Mill and not 25, even though there's a buffer there. That's a little bit confusing, but...
Then you're looking at, that's basically the street trees that would be required on Bagwell Mill. And the bays of the car wash, obviously, or the one single bay faces 25, and then that, you know, kind of the exterior windows faces the north elevation on Bagwell Mill.
Right. It would be virtually impossible to turn that building the other way so the windows would face 25. This is an unusual setup, but I don't see any problem with it. Do y'all have any issue that you want...
Well, isn't it just a little inconvenienced to have a car wash right beside the oldest building in town, the church?
Well, that's, it's a good question, but again, the permitted use table and the zoning district of C1 kind of, I mean, it largely trumps it, so it would take, you know, a long, arduous amendment process to later go through the permitted use table to kind of cherry pick uses that you would want to remove. And then again, you can't necessarily think by way of, oh, it's next to this church. So you know, you would have to apply whatever amended uses to the entire zoning district. So that could get a little arduous and...
Yeah, it's actually more next to a graveyard than it is a church.
I can say that as you're driving north and you're passing Cavalry, there is a huge wall of ever mature Leland Cypress that are completely buffer from this property already. So there would be some separation already built into the picture there.
Any further discussion or concerns or ideas? If not, well, we need a motion to approve this rendering. And is there any wording on this, Eric, that's specific enough to...
Just totally acceptable would just be simply a motion to approve the plan as submitted.
All right.
No, I'm sorry, one other question. Would this, if we approved this, is this, goes to council?
No, this is just, the Heart of Fletcher overlay is just a task of this board. Again, this is a permitted use by rights, so if it wasn't in the overlay, it would just be a staff-level review, not even in front of this board, so.
Are we allowed to comment first before you make the vote?
Sure.
Well, my concern is, because I've seen it happen at the SIPs on Airport Road, which again is also a single thing, they actually have two driveways to go through and pick from your menu and all that. There are times when they back up right onto Airport Road and Hendersonville Road traveling north. Like at certain times of the day, you know, you've got the hospital there, you've got the supermarket there and all that. So my concern is like how much, how many cars in the line can they handle that before what happens if it starts to back up onto Hendersonville Road? And being that the, like you said, the sight line and stuff like that, I see it as...
Could I get your name?
Terry Haas.
Because we have to put it in the record, something.
T E R R I H double A S, as in San Diego.
Do you want to address that? Oh, go ahead. It's extremely valid concern, and it's something that, you know, from a civil site design standpoint, you're always concerned about that, people backing out on a public road. I know you don't have a plan that I can show to you, but the kiosk is at the far end, as far away from 25 as you can possibly get it. And there's probably 250 feet of stacking between the kiosk and the road. So I don't foresee anybody ever backing out onto 25.
Yeah, I mean, the entrance to the car wash itself is in the back. You have to go all the way back to the lot in turn to come in, so you've got the length of the lot for...
Oh, okay.
Also, I want to interject again. They have to approach DOT for driveway ingress, egress, the driveway permit. So DOT would also look at things like their stacking and whatnot to make sure that it's, that it meets their regulations. I mean, obviously, as we know, that some places can get overfull, but it's, you know, development can only meet the requirements. Again, it can only be engineered so much. But again, this does seem to be a very long, skinny, deep lot, and hopefully a lot of room to sell.
One other question, and I think that's a good point. I mean, it looks to me like there's at least a dozen cars that can be in front of that kiosk, but what are all the parking spaces for?
Vacuum. And then there's three employee parking spaces that you can see are called out. And you can, as you can see from the areas, you can only use the vacuum if you go to the car wash.
So there are vacuums that, I mean, where are the vacuums at? I don't...
They hang over the parking...
You what?
They hang over the parking...
Oh, okay, okay. Sorry, I'm not a car wash aficionado.
That's okay. You be educated.
I will.
It's our first, too. It's our first.
That's a right turn only, right? If you're going to come out of that car wash? Because the light is on the pardee side, right?
That is another aspect of their consultation that they're going to have to figure out with DOT.
That's going to be a traffic, right?
We pointed that out because we're not over that part of it.
I got you, okay.
But I brought that attention. I actually had an email from Carl Ome at DOT, I believe.
I've reached out to him.
So they are in touch with DOT, and I pointed out there's a concrete median.
Yeah, because I go to that car wreck right there, and there's a light there, and if it doesn't come out, you have to go right. You can't cross.
If there's any serious obstacle with this development, you guys know that it's probably going to deal with DOT and their, whatever requirements they come up with for access and exiting.
May I ask this one question, too? Because I've seen the visual. Some of the car washes around, like the one up there in South Ashville, has got this bright purple, which I think is not attractive. So hopefully, this one's going to be more, instead of pleasing with the church, it's going to look, it's not going to look like that.
Yes, man, I think this moss has done a great job.
Will it break you, too? If I can get your name, Scott Lawrence. Hooper Creek.
Oh, okay, yeah, Julie Clay. Yeah, okay, that's nice.
Oh, that's it?
Okay, good. That helps. I don't know why they did that. South Ashville looks terrible.
Can we get your name, please?
Is that the same concept that's in Hendersonville now?
Oh, very nice.
Across from Sands?
Okay.
Down on, across from Chick-fil-A?
Yeah.
Well, we have to because we don't have a car wash.
I go with the one behind the lake. We might die.
What you have to do is...
Call me a lot less late. I heard what you get. I go to that wash all the time, and I mean, I'm not, my son has a couple, so we have a lot of fans that go there. And I've seen what you're talking about back up in the road. I've seen there are cars in the road.
Yeah.
That's not often, but several times.
Yeah, definitely.
But it looks to me like they're talking about a lot more than cars here.
Yeah.
But they ended up having it at the time, but I think that's your chance to have it in the road.
Because you have this Hendersonville Road is already a challenge.
All right. Any other comments or concerns? If not, we'll go to the voting. All in favor of, I made a motion, gave you the motion. Did he make a motion? No, he wasn't.
How big a motion?
Joe had made a motion, has anyone got a second? I think I heard a second on the...
I'll say it.
Second. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you all for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, this Heart of Fletcher overlay design review for a proposed convenience store gas station, Phase One, the town center project at the corner of Highway 25 and Howard Gap Road. This is how I recognize Eric Rupa.
Thank you, Eric. Many of you on the board will remember from last summer, although we have had quite a bit of turnover since last summer, half of you saw a presentation last summer for the concept plan as it was underway for the project that is being discussed from our block, starting at the corners here at the clock tower on down the Howard Gap. But this project is involving the Town Center, mixed-use Town Center project that's been kind of underway in the negotiation stage since, I'd say, early 2020. Will Dewey from WTLA Engineering is here again with us tonight. He was here last summer. He is going to give an overview of the entire project again for the benefit of the new members on the board as well as the public that's here with us tonight. I'm going to actually pause and let him come up and speak to it first, and I will be able to jump in and talk as we get further into the overlay review for Phase One. But I wanted to let Will come up and give his introduction to the project and start from there.
Thank you, Eric. Here are members of the board. It's good to see you again, and those of you that are new, good to see you for the first time. Appreciate y'all, too, coming back and talking to you. Since we don't have technology, I'm going to pass out. This is a presentation, an hour-long presentation, and I actually have a couple of extras that we can share with the public. And I apologize because we didn't expect quite this crowd, so we certainly don't have enough for everyone, but thank you. But I will, there's a couple of folks that have copies, and there's a copy of the master plan back there, and I'll share a couple of copies of the presentation. And I'll leave one other, I'll leave one other back here if anyone would like to take a look at that. Also going to pull up a master plan here, this same master plan again is in the back So as Eric said, we're here to talk about the overlay for the first phase of this project, but we felt like it would be important to give an update to planning board, let you know there have been several things that have occurred since I last came to the planning board and made a presentation on this last summer. First and foremost, the buyers and the developers have negotiated a contract for purchase with the town council, and that took place in January. Currently, the property is under contract, and they are technically under due diligence. So they're doing some additional studies. One of the things that we're doing, one of the key due diligence items that we're undertaking right now is a traffic study. We have a traffic engineer who is looking at the existing traffic on Howard Gap Road, Hendersonville Road, looking at the proposed development. We'll have results of the traffic study back fairly soon. We also wanted to come before you and bring you what the first phase would be so that you could see what the building looks like, have an opportunity to review that and give us comments. Ultimately, we expect that the project will likely close in the next couple of months, and assuming we see approval, we'll continue moving forward with construction. I think you already see some demolition that is occurring out there. As Eric said, this project has been ongoing now for about two years. I have worked specifically with Martin Lewis at Lewis Real Estate. Mr. Lewis, his office is on Hendersonville Road in Bunkin County, he's north of here. He was quite interested in this property, has ultimately ended up teaming up with the Waddells, Mr. Paul Waddell and Bo Waddell, who will ultimately be clients of the properties. And there will be some form or combination of those folks who will be the ultimate developers of the master plan that you see here in front of you there. And so I'm going to walk you through this, and please stop at any point if you've got questions, and then as Eric said, we'll get to what the first phase is and the ultimate action that we would be asking you all, planning board members, to consider tonight. But we've got Heart of Fletcher on the cover sheet, and never know if it's Heart of Fletcher or Town Center. Eric has corrected me a number of times, but I think it started out as Heart of Fletcher. Now called Town Center. Couple of the images that you see on the front cover for some of you who may be new, the image at the top is the proposed building that would go at the corner behind the clock tower. The image in the lower left-hand corner is part of the study images that Town of Fletcher developed when they actually began this idea, this concept of what Heart of Fletcher and Town Center might look like. And then on the right, you see the master plan. So that's just giving you some ideas. The second page of the presentation, again, that's that image that was from the study. This image, Eric, is probably 10 to 12 years old at this point, give or take, maybe older.
And the grade was very generous in the artistic part, I agree with that.
That is true, and that is actually a point of conversation that we had had with your town council that had led some of the changes that I'm going to share with you. If you keep flipping over, you can get a look at the existing site. We can turn around and look out the window and see the existing site. Obviously, the town had a vision for what this property might look like, a little different from what we see today. And if you flip over, you will see, to this sheet, you will see the preliminary site plan. And I'm going to move over to this plan and describe a little bit of this to you. Here at the corner of East Fanning Bridge and 25, you see the clock tower that exists today. The plan was really developed to try to address the Heart of Fletcher standards definitively in that, to the extent possible, we were making sure that buildings fronted Highway 25 and East Fanning Bridge Road. One of the other key points that was brought up in the previous conversation is traffic was always a concern. We had proposed a connector road that would actually connect the right-in, right-out turn from Howard Gap and connect all the way through to East Fanning Bridge Road. Here we are at Town Hall. So that road would actually come out over here. This would allow primary access for all of the buildings and the stores and the restaurants to access primarily from the rear. There would only be two driveways or two connections out of Highway 25. There would be a proposed connection for Depot Street, which exists today, only on paper, but Depot Street. And then there would be a driveway, a right-in, right-out here where the proposed triangle stop would go. We believe that's really important because, again, as pointed out and some of the citizens here mentioned it, traffic on Highway 25, the goal is to pull this traffic off of Highway 25, get them back to the connector road, get them safely into these businesses, and be able to safely exit as well. That connector road, which we're calling Johnston Street, it's currently at Johnston Street, is a key point, and as part of the contract purchase, Town of Fletcher would actually participate in the construction cost of that road. They would actually be putting up funds that would be used to build that road. That's going to be one of the first phases that you'll see. That's going to be one of the first phases that you'll see. I'll keep flipping, I'm going to keep asking you to flip with this, but I'm going to keep coming back to this, so if it's okay. Yes, sir.
I have a question, that entrance right there, is it a gas station?
Yes, sir.
Will it?
Oh, here.
Will it accept left-hand turn southbound on 25? Will you be able to?
Here? No, sir. That would only be a right-in, right-out.
Right turn only.
Yes, sir.
So the people that are going south to get in, they'll either go in and at the Fanning Bridge Station, or they'll have to go to Depot Street.
Sure, yes, sir.
So.
Yes, sir.
All right, because that was almost a sentence that I had when we called Washington.
Absolutely. And that is something, we have, we have met with DOT, the local DOT district office, they actually came to Town Hall. Eric was in the meeting, town manager, Mark B. Rill was in the meeting, and we walked through this entire plan with them, knowing that we were going to be doing a detailed traffic study as well, but it was very important for us to get feedback from DOT, were we headed in the right direction on this. This plan and the connections, as you pointed out, Mr. Chair, they were always part of the master plan, and they were part of the presentation we made to town council and to this board back in, in I think it was June or July. But we wanted to meet with DOT and make sure that in high levels, in general terms, that they were comfortable. Indefinitively, they were very comfortable with this approach. They felt like this could provide some relief. This is going to pull traffic off of Highway 25. They felt like that was a very positive thing. And if you look at the number of driveways and the ultimate potential developability of that area, you could look at multiple driveways for various uses. So we're trying to consolidate that down to a very small.
I have another question.
Yes, sir.
So, it's a drive-through.
Yes.
How will you get the people into having to go in left at the entrance and not create a situation right there?
That's a very good question. Good, good signage is going to be most important with that. And to fill you all in what the chair is asking about, this proposed building, which is the mixed-use building that's in the middle of the property, is proposed to be a retail restaurant use, and we do believe that there was a possibility of a drive-through. Now, that drive-through, and I'm going to come back to your question, Mr. Chair, would actually be screened, we would actually provide a screen wall between Highway 25, so that that's going to look like part of the building. So you're not going to see that drive-through. Chair is asking, folks typically are going to come in and go through the drive-through. We're going to have to force them in the wrong way, so that they line up here, take their order, and come around and come out. And that's obviously opposite to what we would normally be driving, primarily signage. Chair, you may remember, we had actually had driveway connections between those parking lots. We eliminated that based on some of the concerns that we heard, I think, in planning board and also with town council. We felt like it was better to leave this as a true standalone driveway. You've got to come all the way in and all the way out, and so to basically make that safe, we're going to have to work on very clear, very good signage.
Will you keep left instead of keep right?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
So it'll be a little tricky, but at least you have addressed the confusion before when we saw it, that there would actually cross over, or people from that part will be cut into that line, it would be so.
We, we heard you loud and clear, and we agree. The more we looked at that, again, what the chair talked about, again, folks could pull in here and break in line, and we had folks backed up. Again, we don't want to back folks up on the Johnston Street. We want to give clear direction on that. Let me walk you around and explain some of the buildings.
Yes, the Depot Road, is that going to require an additional light at Ingersoll Road into Depot, so that there will be three lights for Howard Gap?
We don't know. That'll be part of the DOT traffic study that's ongoing right now.
Yeah, would it be helpful that if Depot Road is just a one-way, will it be going out to Ingersoll Road, so then that forces people to come up to Johnston?
Don't know. And that's part of the traffic study, what part of the traffic study it's going to look at. So to, to get back to the site plan and just share with you a little bit that may have changed since you had seen this before. The two buildings on the north end were proposed to be residential three-story buildings. As we had discussions with town council, one of the concerns that they relayed to us is the visualization. They were concerned about the height of the buildings, perhaps, perhaps getting too tall and blocking views, and so through discussions with them, the buyer and developer had agreed that these would be a maximum of two-story buildings. They're still proposed to be residential buildings. However, depending on the amount of interest we have, there's a possibility that we would be back to you all, looking at those as perhaps retail restaurant buildings. We actually think these will be some of the last buildings that will be built, because if they are residential, they're going to want to know what's around them. So that's a, that's a key change that the planning board, previous planning board referred about. The building that's on the corner, again, you've seen the rendering of that, this would be a two-story, yes, these buildings, again, probably retail restaurant. I'm going to talk a little bit about what some of the uses might be as we continue forward. Going further down Highway 25 south, that would also be a two-story mixed-use building. Again, likely retail restaurant on the lower level, perhaps office on the upper level. Building here, next to Depot Street, would be, again, mixed-use retail restaurant, that's the building with the drive-through. This may be very similar if you're familiar with the new commercial development that's been constructed in Revard. I know people don't leave Fletcher, but if you happen to have left Fletcher and went to Revard, you might be familiar with where the Starbucks is located. They have built a couple of commercial structures there. This could be very similar to that. And then, of course, on the end, this is where the triangle stop would go. And so you start to get a feel for what the total project would, would entail and would look like. I'll flip over, and we talked a little bit about some of the site planning items. I'll ask you to, to maybe take a look at this line, lighter black and white, but if you want to look at, this is the rendering again that's on the cover of our, of our proposal here. This is the building that's at the corner, and potential uses, what would they be? Restaurant is certainly a strong possibility. Tavern, tasting room, we put a lot of interest in breweries. I know that the developers have had contact with folks about that. Retail, hardware home services, there's certainly been some interest there. A lot of discussion about professional office, probably again on the second floor of these buildings. Educational. If we got into the residential, perhaps live work, where you have retail on the bottom, and maybe you only have residential on the second story, that could be a possibility. So all of these are, are possible uses that, that you might see. And we can keep flipping. This is a little bit of a dated drawing. If you look, this is kind of a bird's eye rendering, or a bird's eye view. If you were to look from above and down, you can see, you'd be looking at the buildings and how they ring. The one point, change that I'll point out to you is the restaurant building that's in the middle of that has not been pulled forward to address the street, and that certainly has been done on site plan and would be implemented. Again, you can see a little bit more how, what, what buildings look like. If you keep flipping to some of the word sections, this is just a description of what buildings may be, again, the two, two-story residential buildings that I described to you, the two mixed-use buildings. This one's about 18,760 square feet, this one roughly 13,500 square feet, about 3,500 square feet, a little over 6,300 square feet at the end. You might notice on the site plan, a very dark line here that runs through this building. That line represents property that's owned by DOT. Town of Fletcher purchased everything that NC DOT did not own, so when our client, when contract with town, this piece was not included. But as you can see, that's a key cog, that's a key piece in the wheel of this overall master plan. The developer, with the support of the town, has requested that DOT sell that property. There is interest from DOT in selling that property. So you will likely see this being a later phase in development, because we have to work through about a year-long process to secure that property from DOT. But we're very optimistic that that can happen. Your town manager has been working on behalf of that very diligently, and we'll continue to keep posted as we, as we come to see you from time to time. So if we flip over one more page, this is Phase One, and this is where we start to get into the need of the, of the request for you tonight. Eric, please jump in wherever, wherever you want. Phase One, so what is Phase One of this project going to include? So Phase One would include removal of the existing buildings, and, and the town of Fletcher is doing that, the town still owns the property, they're in the process now, so they're going to be working on the, the removal of the existing buildings, clearing and grading for the entire site. So the developers will do that in Phase One. Once all the buildings have been removed and the closing takes place, they will actually clear and grade the whole thing. We'll build Johnston Street, so we'll actually make that connection. We'll build Depot Street, so the infrastructure that would support this entire development will be in with Phase One. We're not going to build a piecemeal, we'll actually have those connections. And then construction of the triangle stop on the end would be part of the nature one.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
On the, when you grade that whole site, and the construction of the, of the triangle, what's going to happen as far as temporary, whether it's landscaping, or what's that going to look like?
Sure.
Assuming that that rest of the phase is, you know, coming later, and we know, I don't know how long.
I'll, if you'll flip over one more page, what you'll see is basically what we believe Phase One's going to look like. We think this is going to look like a nice grass field. This is going to be, it'll be graded, it'll be grassed, it'll be maintained. You're likely going to see, assuming they're, they meet the zoning approval signs for coming soon, this is what would be constructed here. So it will look like it's a finished, graded pad, ready to go. And the developers are going to continue to market those pieces as they go forward. My guess is you're going to see development move from south to north. Again, we know that the DOT piece has to be acquired before this can go forward, but this building and this building could certainly be constructed, and so that's why my assumption is that we'll see construction from south.
And who, who's going to maintain that?
The developer, the owner. They would be mowing it, they would be maintaining that entire section of property once they take ownership of it.
So the first structures to be installed will be the gas station?
Correct, correct. And let's talk about what that looks like. If you.
Wait a question.
Yes, sir.
On the Phase One preliminary site plan, obviously that's temporary as development goes along.
Yes, sir.
I can't quite see. What's the contour lines?
Those are, those are two, those are two-foot contour lines. That's exactly right. So from this corner down, it will have a gently sloping grade. Again, as we stand here, I've got the benefit of looking back at the property, you can tell how it falls, but if you think about sitting in the traffic light at East Fanning Bridge and looking, it's going to mimic the grade of Highway 25 once that. So if you flip over.
I'm sorry, one other question.
Yes, sir.
On that, on the developer maintaining that site? I mean, again, what, what oversight do, I mean, if the grass grows up to three feet and it weeds?
Well, sure.
Who, who, you know, what, what oversight do we have to make sure that that stays looking good?
I would say there's two things, Eric can certainly jump in. One, I would say that the developer has invested interest, they're paying a lot of money to purchase this property, and the look of this is going to be critical for them to continue to market and build the next building. So they have invested interest. I think, secondly, and in addition to that, there's an obligation to report back to the town council on a quarterly basis. There's some question, is that a meeting in front of town council, is that a written report quarterly? There would be a report submitted to the town council about, here's where we stand with the next phase, this is who we're talking to, so your council will be kept up to speed the whole time. My guess is if, if council hears from residents and sees that that's not being kept up, we're going to hear that and, and that meeting. And then third, Eric, I suspect you guys have some zoning regulations.
Well, actually, yeah, I was just going to interject that, that a lot of folks don't like to hear this, but the town does not have a comprehensive nuisance abatement ordinance that covers things like grass length and whatnot, but I was going to say that, and basically mimic what Will was saying, and I don't need to repeat, is that because there's such a back-and-forth relationship, just due to the nature of this development, in particular being more of a public-private partnership, is there's going to be that oversight and the continual back-and-forth until the project's complete, and, like, again, it's, I, I have faith it's not going to get sloppy, so.
Chris, Eric, can I answer your question? Does it sound like the way you were saying before, that they would be upkeep into a traffic? So do they already have people that want to, like, I'm trying to understand, are these buildings going to get built no matter what, and then they're attracting clients? Do they have people that are willing to come into it already? Or if they get nobody interested, they don't build the buildings?
So there's a couple of things I'll share with you, and I'll address the board and you as well. Yes, they have folks who are very interested. If those buildings were up today, they have folks who are willing to rent those buildings right away. Building on the corner, we know we can't build because until we work that out with DOT, that can't be done. Until the project went under contract with town council in January, the developers really couldn't approach potential renters, because it's simply not done. They don't have it under contract, so there's no guarantee that they have control over the property. Since they have, have gone under contract in January, they have had numerous meetings with users. I'm not at liberty to discuss who any of those folks are, but likely what you will see is they will get to a point that they have a certain occupancy that has guaranteed or said, we will take that space, and that's when you will see the next phases come forward. And that's why it will occur over time. Sure. Please, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Oh, good room, and it looks like a nice project, but is there any traffic study being done, because this really gets really congested? Is it in the works, and what's going to be the projected generated traffic trips per day?
Sure. So there is a traffic study that's underway right now. Traffic counts have occurred over the course of December and January. The DOT is involved in that traffic study, confirming the scope of all of the areas that have to be studied. We don't have the results of that traffic study yet. It'll probably be back in the course of the next 30 days. One of the keys, and I'll address you as, as well as the board, one of the keys of the contract for purchase was that the developers have to agree that they will not decrease the level of service on the road, and, and that's part of the contract. That's also the reason, that's also one of the requirements the DOT had. So with the number of, of businesses that we're going to have here, the amount of traffic that we'll generate is a little bit unknown, because it depends on the type of businesses that we'll use, but the, the traffic engineers will use trip generation to tell us how many trips will come off of that. Ultimately, the developer, as part of their contract, is obligated to mitigate any issues related to traffic. But that's a good question, absolutely.
And one other question, because I was going to alleviate with the traffic. I'm in the South Chase neighborhood.
Sure.
And I look forward to something like this for walkability.
Yes.
Which would increase walkability into town. However, when they redid all the sidewalks and all that, they stopped at the, you know, right, does he, the.
Entrance.
Well, they, no, they stopped at like Howard Gap Road, and they didn't redo the driveways or put lighting down that way, down to like the South Chase neighborhood, right at Woodhull, entrance and all that.
Right.
So I was wondering if there's anything coordinated with the town, that if you're going to do this, all that, that you would increase the situation to create walkability for people that live in such a situation that they can walk into the town, not have to drive?
Just to say a piece about that, the, the project that she's referred to is what started at Kane Creek. It was, you know, a grant-funded project that kind of had limited parameters based on the grant funding available at the time, so unfortunately, it had to pick a couple So unfortunately, it had to pick a couple of key intersections. Howard Gap to Kane Creek was the parameter of that particular streetscape that was largely DOT, 580%. So I can't say there's anything on the immediate horizon about improved sidewalks along 25. We can say that we were blessed to have any sidewalks when they did the widening, which wrapped up in 2003. I wasn't here when that was finishing up. I understood at the time it was a miracle to get sidewalks along that type of order. So we can't promise anything short-term on that, but appreciate the question.
Could it be something tied into the developers that, because you have that whole, like, little business center, which also looks like a very neglected, sad, like, you know, the heart of Fletcher. Where is the heart of Fletcher ended? I don't understand. It seems like it ended at the Dollar Store. And, you know, you have a whole business commercial buildings there that just kind of fell apart.
Well, and unfortunately, we don't have control of all the properties. There's a lot of old grandfathered stuff out there. It's, you know, over time, it's redeveloping. You know, this was a strategic purchase, this particular block, because the, to give like a two-minute history of the whole heart of Fletcher concept, we started in around the year 2000. We started with 28 acres of landlocked property where Public Works is and on this way around 2008 to '10 range, there had been conversations with a prospective developer for land back here that we got excited about that never went anywhere. But as a part of that whole process, the town had acquired the land where we're sitting in town hall now. And just over the years, developer after developer had talked about how not much was ever going to have with heart of Fletcher because of the landlocked nature of the lots back here. And they said that, you know, there had to be some presence on 25. So council, I guess, starting about, I want to say, three or so years ago.
Yeah, the surveys.
Time-wise, the purchase, I guess you could say the star line with all the different property owners where they were able to get all that under contract. All voluntary sales by the property owners at the time, nothing involved with emanating their land or anything like that. And so that's where the footprint is of, you know, the land that's, you know, a subject of discussion tonight. When the town did the request for proposals on that land, there was a simultaneous request for proposals on our land back here, and there were no submittals at that time. So I think, again, the developers are all looking at, you know, the 25 corridor. I think once that gets going, you'll see some market conditions emerge that will sort of tip the dominoes. And you may see stuff happen back here. I can see that getting built, the town doing a request for proposals, and then, you know, they're being interested back here. I also think over time, there will be pressures on property values along the Highway 25 corridor, and you may see stuff turn over. I can't speak for the Dollar General complex. I mean, I've jokingly talked to other developers that have been in my office saying, hey, if you can get a conversation with that group, we'll help to where you develop the plan. So, right? We haven't seen that happen because we're just not in control of that part of it, so.
It would just be nice to be able to come and walk and enjoy this.
And that is the overall vision of the whole town center back from when it started. And all we can say is baby steps on it. This is a huge, huge first step. I've been here since 2003. And when I first started here, I said, why are we breaking ground? So here we are.
I can say to add to what Eric is saying, I think the idea that you have interest in this is the fact that the town has invested in sidewalks and improvements along Highway 25. The town invested in working with willing landowners and buying that land and putting one piece together. If you had developers that had to go and talk with each property owner and try to negotiate the purchase of each one, would have. And I think that's one of the reasons that you probably haven't seen any activity before. And I think it's one of the reasons that the town elected and decided to move forward with the project. I keep going through presentation now, and I'll share with you, again, Phase One is a triangle stop. Why is that Phase One? And certainly I'll invite you to flip over and take a look at what the building looks like. Why is that Phase One? Every development needs an anchor. And while these are really interesting buildings on the north end of the property, those are very, very expensive buildings and take a lot of effort to lease up. Obviously, this one takes a lot of effort, but you've got to still work through with DOT. The Triangle Stop, this property was never anticipated for development on master plan. If you look at the master plan, it's on cover sheet of this presentation, there was nothing that was planned on that property. We saw all the town's vision, but we also saw an opportunity to use that and to make that into something that would allow the cost of the land, which was significant, the cost could be spread to this entity, the Triangle Stop, and allow less costs allocated for the properties to the north. And that would really put, if this were not part of the master plan, I'm not sure that I'd be here before you tonight even speaking about this. I don't think we would have gotten this property under contract. So I think this is a key cog in allowing the rest of this property to develop in a way the town's vision has been seen. One of the keys was how do we make the Triangle Stop fit in and be part of this development? And again, I think that's where I would share with you. Take a look at the building. When I presented the building to planning board back in June or July last year, one of the planning board members said, oh, that would be a great-looking bank. It looks like a library. And this building is a little different from the building that you saw then, but it's very similar. This would be a very tall building. This building would be 21 feet tall. So it's going to have the look of a two-story building, again, to meet the heart of Fletcher standards. It'll be brick-faced, it'll have the black roof. And where does that come from? The precedent is the building we're standing in. As our development team looked at, what should this property look like? What should this mimic? The thing we kept coming back to was the town hall. Now, there were other ideas thrown out, and there were thoughts of, you know, perhaps we should mimic Fletcher Feed and Seed. Perhaps we should mimic some of the other, the building across the street, the Feed and Seed, old Feed and Seed building across the street. But development team and getting some feedback from the town kept coming back to the town hall and felt like that was the right feel. If town is, the town hall is the center, letting that feel kind of emanate back out, really, we felt like took the vision that town saw and took it out into the area that you all wanted to see developed. So we think this is a great-looking building. It's not going to look like a convenience store. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to visit the Triangle Stop that was recently reconstructed again. I know no one leaves Fletcher, but in case they did, in Penrose, Triangle Stop had a facility that was located in Penrose that was a very old store. They acquired some additional property and they constructed a facility. That is a very, very nice convenience store that has a tap room inside of it, they have outdoor seating area, they have an area for cornhole. It's a gathering spot that is very intentional, that's going to be on the Acoustic Trail. Again, we think that vision with this building can fit in very well and very nicely. We're also leaving an awful lot of area down this end that we envisioned to be landscaped. We envisioned that there will be some type of play of the clock tower down this end. We don't know if it's another clock tower, or we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. But this gives the opportunity to set off that block and really tell the tale for what the heart of Fletcher should be, what town center should be.
Can I ask a question on the canopy where the gas pumps are?
Yes.
I mean, there's really no rendering of what that's going to look like and how that's going to kind of, you know, so many of those canopies where the gas pumps are just look like a canopy.
Right.
Like a, you know, something on a piece of property for cars to pull under, run in the garage type thing, sheet metal type thing. And how is that going to be designed to not look like that?
That's a great question. So a couple of things that were done. One is intentionally hold the canopy behind the building. And that is really a no-no for a gas station. The idea of hiding the canopy, it's just not a good idea. But the developers understood if they wanted this to work in the heart of Fletcher and the, in this district, we had to do that. Secondly, and I wish I brought some of the photographs that we shared with the planning board last summer. The facility that they constructed in Brevard are all brick columns coming up with a canopy. The canopy would mimic the building, so it would very much mimic the look. These property owners, the Lottel, are incredibly proud of their business.
Yeah, this is Triane, that's a local company.
They are, they are. Yeah, they live in Henderson County. That's exactly right. They've got facilities in Henderson, Full, Transylvanian, Boncomb. That look is going to be very, very important to them. And so it will play off of the building. So the look that you see on the building is very much the look that we will take to the canopy. We don't want that to be an afterthought, just as this, the look of the graded side, the well-kept of the manager is going to be very important as well. Couple other things I'll share with you. If you flip a few more slides, I'll stop talking. I brought, two more slides. There is a slide that has some measurements along frontage. One of the keys of your heart of Fletcher overlay is how much building frontage do we have along this section? And this shows that we're meeting that 70% a couple of ways. But with the buildings all being pulled forward, even though we've got the gas pumps and the canopy pulled back away, we've also added the screen wall. So that requirement's going to be met through the overall development as we move forward. So we wanted to share that with you tonight. Even though we're looking at Phase One, it's being thought about for all of the phases as we go forward. We really talked about a lot of it this summer. We talked about what's going to be in Phase One and what's going to be included. I'll stop at that point and try to answer any questions. I know we had some questions going, but, and Eric, please, if I missed anything, you looking up.
I think Will covered just about everything I could have thought of to say, but I'll obviously be available for questions as they come up.
I have a question, this gas station, what is the roof made of? Is it composite? Is it single or metal?
We actually have a designer here with us tonight. Jerry, would you like to speak to that at all?
Sure. It's a metal roof, but we have a flat roof that you can't see, which is where our equipment will go. So it's a dark colored metal, like standing sea roof, yeah, like a mansion.
So, and he said it would be black, I think he mentioned it would be black.
Yeah, like a black or a dark bronze, something that's a dark color.
Did you say it's flat or mansion?
It's a mansion around a flat roof. It won't seat, so that it'll look like a roof in the outside.
Yeah. I'm just glad we're not going with dark deck color.
No.
One other question.
Yes, sir.
Justin Boulevard, that's not the original line of it. That actually would be going through the building that's there now, right here.
That's exactly right. Fletcher Feed and Seed, so we've worked, again, I could, we could talk for hours, I'm not going to do that, you guys have a long meeting, but we've met extensively with folks at Blue Ridge Southern. The road has actually been moved much closer to the railroad than the old road was. Fletcher Feed and Seed is actually closer even than the road is located. So the buildings actually extend over the road, is about 35 feet off of the centerline of the tracks. And that was sort of the stipulation that Blue Ridge Southern had established. They've looked at this plan, they've reviewed the plan, they have approved it preliminarily, will have to work through. There's some leasing arrangement because we will be on their right-of-way for the road, but we'll have to work through those details. But from a preliminary standpoint, they have reviewed improvements.
Yeah, that was a concern. I wouldn't go ask you because I knew it didn't matter that y'all would have to work it out with those things.
We'll bet the stars.
Yes. This road right here that you see, that was parallel with Johnston Boulevard that we hope someday that it would join?
Right.
That that would come out almost at the same place on Howard Gap.
Sure.
But, yeah, that was almost a hope for that would be used as a road instead of Johnston Road, that I can see how you need access without interference. But another concern I have, of course, is the railroad.
Yes.
And the safety and the things that happened because of interfering with traffic. You're on the site that the fire department is, so that's not going to be an issue with this project.
Right.
Anyway, thank you. Any other questions from the planning board?
Eric, do you have anything?
I don't have anything to add.
Any other questions from the people over here? Yes, go ahead.
Who's on the development team this side of the look of the exterior of this gas station? Who's the big hole development?
So the development team is made up of Mark Lew and Beau Waddell and Hall Waddell. The three of them had worked early on with a number of folks on town staff. Town manager had looked at this, feedback originally from council. And then ultimately, you know, when we had spoken about the idea of Fletcher Feed and Seed, we took that to heart, we looked at that idea. And then when we came back to council and made the presentation that night, we had shown in that presentation the rendering generally that you see tonight. And we really felt like, while certainly honoring Fletcher Feed and Seed is important, the look of the building being so different from the other buildings probably would be not the way to go. And we felt like there was a better way to honor Fletcher Feed and Seed in some of the older buildings, perhaps inside the building or in some of the other buildings, to be determined. But ultimately, that was where that came from.
I would add to that, and Jack too, that, you know, we're largely boxed in by our own regulations, that, you know, we went through numerous, you know, George, longer-serving members will attest to, with the overlay standards, you got the foot in place, you know, with the architectural design standards in Article Five. I mean, we put all these requirements in for brick and stone, lots of windows and openings. And, you know, right from the beginning, you know, we were, you know, going back to what, middle of 2020, we're basically steering the team in a way to meet our design standards, which is what ended up before us. And again, it was like a gas station we've not seen before. So again, it would take, you know, a longer set of amendments and discussions about our, you know, design standards to tweak this at this point, so, yeah, I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, it's been years and years of working on the design standards for heart of Fletcher. You said this looks like a library, we need a library, so if this gas station ever work out, then we have an opportunity. Any other questions, comments from the?
I have one question. Because we all love Fletcher Park, is it going to be, do you think down the road, foot traffic to this proposed, like retail? Is it going, I guess if you get concerned with the traffic, if this is going to be a cut, or is it going to be a lot of traffic trying to avoid 25 and coming around and going down, you know, Howard Gap? So then it's kind of two separate things. I'm hoping, well, I've always wanted to be able to walk from Fletcher Park over to look at some nice retail space and have a try.
We agree 100%. So part of Johnston Street will have a multi-use path, a trail, so there'll be sidewalks that would connect from where the railroad's located all the way around the development. And our vision is very much that folks will walk from the park up.
Yeah, park there and walk over.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And we were very happy, just within the last, I guess, couple of years, the connection from the park sidewalk up to 25 was completed when DOT finally finished that little segment of Howard Gap as well. So again, it's all in the grand scheme of things, and we're taking those little baby steps towards hopefully achieving that. And I know that if the land we're sitting on right now is ever developed in a similar mixed-use style, there's, you know, all kinds of various visions for connecting back to the park that way in some form of greenway trail to do back to the parks.
Yes, ma'am.
My question's about signage.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to, I hope not have tree sign on the frontage there, somehow have a marquee or with all of them.
You know, we haven't brought a sign package to Eric, and that would certainly happen. You know, we haven't brought a sign package to Eric, and that would certainly have to meet the town of Fletcher signage. Certainly, there's going to be some signage. We don't know what that's going to necessarily be, but my guess is it would all be a combined sign.
Yeah, we'll again have to look at how this gets broken up into, you know, multi versus single tenant. Generally, in the C1 zoning district where most of this land is located, properties are limited to 80 square foot ground or monument signs. In cases where developments are over four acres, you can go up a little bit, I believe. But that'll be another separate matter that we sit down with the development team on. But we do require, like even signs require like brick faces and whatnot. There's someone limited in the C1. That was some amendments that went through and ratcheted some signs we didn't like a number of years ago.
I know Zaya Ward, but I'd like to recognize Mette. She was probably, I don't know how long before me. I've been on the planning board over 27 years. She was on the planning board before my time. So she's glad you're here tonight.
First time talking about the redevelopment of Fletcher.
She knows what she's talking about with the council plan. She was here before me.
That's great.
Been many years. But anyway, thank you so much. Good to see you again.
Thank you.
But anyway, any other concerns, questions, comments before we vote? Any other questions from the board? If not, we'll have a motion to approve these preliminary plans. And does this need to be separate for design standards?
This would just literally be for the heart of Fletcher design, again, once again for phase one of the project as was debated.
And I'm sorry, was this, again, ignorant, this process, but does it go back to council?
This design review does not go back to council on this. So we would see any number of iterations of this again later, as Will mentioned. Hopefully, just all in one fell swoop with the rest of it, but it could, to be determined on the basis.
All right. Any other questions, concerns? If not, do I have a motion to approve these ? It's so good. Is there a second?
I'm ready.
It's been double second. Any trouble? If not, all in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Most curious. Thank you so much. We look forward to this project. It's been decades in the works.
Let me just add one thing to Jeff's question about the council. It's again, as Will mentioned earlier, there is, as per the economic development agreement, the purchase agreement, there's a series of check-ins that will be required with council along the way to make sure certain benchmarks are being met. So there will be lots of council votes decided on the rest of the way.
They are our elected officials.
All right. Thank y'all so much. Thank the board for your work in this. Appreciate everyone's there, first of all.
You want to take a, you want to take a quick sentence? You want to go talk?
Yeah, the only other thing I had to add was that the, as we talked about last month, the next scheduled meeting date would be a little bit irregular, and that we were setting it for April 26. And that is if we receive any items. We had a couple of big meetings in fact, fact months. I don't necessarily yet have anything on the horizon for an April meeting, but I'll stay in touch with you. But the date would be April 26 on that if we also, and it would also be in this room again, because the room downstairs is locked for the beginning of early voting and whatnot, if council takes.
Do you know what the date would be for May? You don't know that?
Um, third Tuesday. I don't have that at my fingertips, but it would be the third Tuesday of May.
And be sure and vote, since you're already going to be here. Anyway.
Third Tuesday will be the 17th.
Thank you. May 17.
Yeah.
So I guess if we have a meeting, it'll be in here again, I do.
And hopefully, we'll have a little more room and enough chairs and everything will be so involved. Anybody got anything you want to add?
I think I'm pretty excited. Like you were, you came, I'm going to go break down. I'm here in town too, so. You said you're going to be here like, we said.
Yeah, I've turned into a old man waiting on this. It's been a long wait. Thank y'all. I appreciate meeting in general. We don't have to vote anymore for that. Appreciate everybody's care.